October 6, 2014. Does anyone have a conflict of interest with anything appearing on the agenda tonight?
Nope.
First up is approval of minutes. Let me bring up minutes from our 9:15 meeting. I had a couple of minor changes. Did everyone get the changes that I put in?
Mm-hmm.
Are there any other changes?
Motion to approve the minutes of October 6.
We have a motion to approve the minutes from September 15.
September 15.
As amended, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Warrants. We have three warrants. I move that we approve check warrant number seven in the amount of $24,164.43. Do I have a second? Major items, William Barney Construction, $7,600.
This roadstone and gravel pit.
Thank you. Bennington County Sheriff for $1,400. I'm rounding these quite a bit.
And there was $8.50 for the sheriffs for the White Creek when I had them with the road crew.
$1,400 to William E. Daly, $1,200 to Green Mountain Power, $1,200 to John Ray &amp; Sons, and a few more. That's our diesel.
That's the diesel. And I do have another one in there because I bought a pump for the chloride truck. Just so we're clear, and I had to charge it because we don't have a town card.
Yes.
It was either the truck sits and the job doesn't get done, or I buy a pump, so I bought a pump.
That would be $454.45 to David Kieranin for using his credit card to buy an emergency car for the truck.
You may talk about a town card soon.
We thank you for doing that. Michael Slaven, we've got almost $1,000 to him. What was that? Murphy Hillwork.
Oh, that's the compactor, the roller compactor they rent from him.
Okay. Sycamore Landscaping, $2,000 for mowing the cemetery, $1,100 to wholesale distributors.
Variety of parts in the garage.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I have retirement warrant, PR 7, in the amount of $92.91. I move we approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And another retirement in the amount of $7,698.75. I move we approve. Is there a second?
Second.
I'm used to retirement warrants being in about $100. This one's $7,800.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
We have basically two retirement systems. We have a defined contribution system. One town official participates in that. The remainder of the town officials participate in defined benefits. The defined contribution system contribution is paid each pay period. The defined benefit contribution is paid once a quarter. So you will see that amount is very consistent, and you'll see that paid quarterly after the year's end. If it's appropriate to pay that amount. That number is withheld from employees, and the town also participates. And while it's not exactly half and half, it approximates half and half. Half of that money comes from employees' holdings. Half of that money is the contribution to the retirement.
Okay. Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
This one's only quarterly. The Board of Civil Authority, which includes a lot of us, will reconvene this Wednesday at 6:00 PM. I know Art is not going to be able to make it. He has indicated with a letter what he would say if he were there, and I think you've seen. So we'll see. Continuation of the last one? Yes, we're ruling on the properties that we heard about the first time. We've had the inspection reports have come back. They'll get read, and then we will make a decision. I also want to announce that the Shastberry Elementary School is having a Safe Routes to Schools sponsored Walk to School Day Wednesday at 8:00 in the morning. This is International Walk to School Day. Schools all across Vermont are participating. Shastberry is one of them. And anybody that feels like getting a little exercise and maybe carrying an umbrella Wednesday mornings, welcome to join us. And that's at 8:00. We meet at T&amp;M Plastics on Church Street and walk the half mile to school.
I have a couple announcements. I attended a PublicAssets.org second decade campaign. It's a nonprofit information that provides information to make fact-based decisions. They work with both parties. They basically drive informative discussion with facts. And they have a website, and they do some comparative analysis on different parts of Vermont. And you can access that website at www公募资产.org. Also, I'd like to thank, beg thank you, to Lux Brush and their crew, Travis Sannacall and his crew, and Adrian Battiglione from Sherwin-Williams for assisting and giving the Glusha homestead a facelift. It was much needed and very timely. Thank you very much.
Very good. So that wasn't you running that front loader out there?
No, that was me.
That was you? Okay.
No, that was the painting. The painting, they did all the painting and the glazing and everything. Very nice.
Good. Well, thank you for doing that work that you did.
Well, almost done. Hopefully get it done completely before snow flies.
Item six on the agenda is public comments. Yes, sir, welcome.
My name is Rod Cameron.
Come up and...
I have a couple of issues I wanted to bring to the board.
Yeah, I'm Mr. Namigan.
Rod Cameron.
Rod Cameron, thank you.
I have a home on Dunham Avenue. And my first issue is Elm Street, which is at the top of Dunham, goes down, it cuts into White Creek Road. The speed limit there, well, I think it's 35, but cars are going down through there like 50, 60 miles an hour.
On Dunham?
Yes. Or no, on Elm.
On Elm. Okay.
And, well, right at the top of Dunham, where Elm intersects with Elm, there's a corner there, and it's a blind corner. A lot of people don't realize how sharp it is until they get into it, and...
Somebody ended up in a house there, didn't they?
They almost hit me. I was out there walking my dogs. I went right down into Marilyn Kenyon's yard. And then, two nights ago, we were walking the dogs, and a truck was coming up through there flying, and he saw us, hit the brakes, went sideways, came back. But I mean, it's just an everyday occurrence. It's just, I think what happened is, when they were doing the road, Bank Street, they were using that road as a detour.
Shortcut.
And now people, they found that road, they know it's a shortcut, and they just fly through there. And it's a problem. I mean, it's dangerous.
Yeah.
I was thinking if you could make the speed limit 25, maybe they'd get them down to 35. I don't know. But there has to be something that, and maybe having a sheriff there once in a while just to...
Sheriff would be our first.
That's the first thing we can do, is get the sheriff out there.
Put this sign...
Have him patrol it. Put it on his patrol.
I don't even think there's a speed limit on that, or a speed limit sign on that.
I don't think there is.
No. I think it's a...
Just understood that anything that isn't posted is 35.
Yeah. It's, yeah.
Yeah. We can get some signage for the car.
It's 25 on White Creek Road down there.
Yeah, it's 25 on that road. And then you get on a dirt road where, and I mean, there's a lot of people that walk their dogs on that road, they walk their kids on that road. And I mean, I'm scared to death to be on that road now. I mean, it's...
Would a sign going up be beneficial? I mean, it might be...
I'm talking about the blinking sign.
Yeah, we can get the speed sign from the sheriff. We can have him... Or even like a speed limit sign with a pedestrian, you know, sign there. Just something that so people realize there's pedestrians walking and stuff.
And they approved that, right? And that was the problem, is that they approved it because it's usually...
You know, I was gonna say, Terry's doing a great job. He's doing a great job. But in a way, it hurts because...
Well, that's what I'm thinking, because it's usually a washboard road with a lot of potholes, and you can't go very fast on that road.
But you had him put it back.
You know, I don't want to complain about it, because he's doing a great job. But I mean, I think that is, you know, now the road is good, and people just fly down through there, and they don't...
Absolutely, sure.
But I'm just afraid, for my own self and for anybody else that's on that road, that they're gonna, somebody's gonna get hurt.
Well, especially on a dirt road.
Yeah, because you hit the brakes.
Try to slow down on that, you're slipping on marbles.
Exactly. And they just lose control, and, yeah. So that's the one issue. And then the other issue is, the house directly across from me, and it's, it's an abandoned house, and I don't know what's, I brought some pictures to show, but it's...
Is this the one with the garbage bags up against the...
I'm not sure if there's garbage there or not, but it's a danger, because, I mean, if kids get in there or something, they can get hurt. It's extreme eyesore, yes.
Right on the corner.
Yeah.
That's on Dunham?
Yeah, right on the top of Dunham.
Whose house is that?
It's Barber's. They both passed away. And their son's out in California, I believe.
Do you know the actual address there?
I don't. I'm 164. They're across, maybe 1...
Which one's that?
Is that the northeast corner of Dunham?
Round top of Dunham.
If you're going up Dunham, it's right on, it's on the lefty inside, right on the corner.
At the top? I haven't been down there in a while.
I know what house it is. More around 163.
I spy it all the time.
I think the water, I think the water pipes broke, Neil Kenyon had...
They did. They broke. And I mean, you know, I mean, it's, and if kids get in there, I mean, that's gonna be a...
Can the town do anything? I don't know if the town...
Well, we can send a, we can try to contact them and let them know that the neighbors are complaining. If it gets to be a real health issue, we can take action. But that's, that's within limits, and what constitutes a health issue is pretty well-defined. And ugly is not a health issue, unfortunately. But we can certainly try to contact, you said the people that owned it are both dead?
Yeah, they had one son, and he's out in California. He's, I think he teaches at Pepperdine University. And I know, like, we tried to contact him to see if he was interested in selling the place, and I know a few other people have tried to contact him. So I don't quite, he never responds to anybody. So I don't know, you know, I mean, I just don't know why somebody would want to let their home, anybody want this to just fall to the ground. I mean, it just doesn't make any sense to me. But it is, it's an extreme eyesore, and to me, it is a danger, because if any kids or anything get in there, I mean, it's, I'm sure probably the floors are ready to fall right through, so, but...
Okay.
Well, I know what house it is. Well, I'll look into it tomorrow and see what we can do about it. Get a certified letter out to them like some of the other ones we've done, just see if we can get a response.
Yeah, sometimes a certified letter will, from the town, will stir a response.
I just want to kind of bring it to your attention and see if there was anything that could be done.
Well, uh...
But the road's my biggest fear. I really think, you know, that something has to be done there, it's, before somebody gets hurt.
Yeah, we can definitely do something about the road by, one, contacting the sheriff. He'll increase, likely, you know, put that on his route of patrols for the short term. He can put the feedback sign up there. And if there are no speed limit signs on the road right now, we can buy some and put them up, so...
I appreciate that.
We'll do that. All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Tell me your last name again.
Cameron. C.A.M.E.R.O.N.
Dave, when you contact the sheriffs, tell them that from 6:30 in the morning through about 7:00, a lot of people working at Shastberry that live in White Creek use that as a shortcut. I see more cars following me, and then they go off.
The morning and then the evening when they're coming home.
The same thing.
That's the same thing. I mean, those are the two times that they're the worst, but...
Anybody that works at Daly's or something uses that as a shortcut.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Any other public comments?
All right.
Good evening.
Good evening. Mr. Chairman. What I hope to do tonight is to review the fiscal year ended June 30, 2014, financial statements and give you a picture of where we ended the year. I will, I have more information than I normally present. We've discussed a lot of this, and I'm not going to go through it line by line unless you want me to, but I will try to summarize. I will also attempt to give you a brief explanation of the current fiscal year, where we stand now. We do not have, I do not have financial statements for the September 30 quarter-end yet. I can have those at the next meeting, but I have a, just basically tell you where we are with respect to that, and go from there. I provided, through Dave, I provided a balance sheet and a statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance for the general fund. And I also provided some financial information for some other funds as well, a couple of categories of other funds. So if I may, I'm following the, and I'll refer to the page numbers. We're looking at total revenue, and this is page two of 10.
If I could get you to pause one second. Sure. Did we get that document?
It's on the drop box.
Let me pull that up, because I don't think I, I'm afraid I haven't looked at it, so I need to get it in front of us.
Over here in tax rate.
All right, it's not, did you put it in there late today?
No, it was in there Friday.
Under this meeting?
That one right there.
Oh, draft receivables. No?
No.
I don't think any of us have seen it.
It's in mine. It's in mine in that folder.
Well, sorry, that, it fell victim to computers. We don't, we haven't seen it, so we'll just have to listen, I guess.
We'll give you a narrative, and then we'll provide documents for you. Dave and I can do that tomorrow, I guess.
Yeah, sure.
We trust you, anyway.
Oh, that's not a good move.
We have all that.
That's, that's very kind, Mr. Harrington. I appreciate that, sir, but I'm prepared to give you a report in spite of that.
I'm sure of that.
I appreciate that degree of trust. Well, it looks right now where we are, and this, these numbers are pretty definite. I say pretty definite, that's, that's a little, I don't know if there's, there's something wrong with that, Mr. Educator, isn't there? But we do, we still occasionally get small invoices that show up from last fiscal year, because vendors are slow to bill, or they come out from under a file cabinet somewhere, and somebody discovers them. Unless they're material, we're going to push them over into the new fiscal year. I'm not going to redo the financials for $100, but basically, that's where we are. We're looking at total revenue for the fiscal year of about $1.7 million, and that's essentially what we budgeted. You know, and we're about $25,000 below budget. And principally, that's a whole series of different line items. The major one, we've talked about before, the $73,000 grant revenue we budgeted for paving that didn't appear. So that brought us down, and then we've offset that by having more real estate taxes that were collected than we anticipated. The delinquent taxes have come down. Other than that, you know, there are pluses and minuses in these categories, most of them in the range of, you know, plus $1,000, minus $1,000. And we had the sale of equipment during the year, which brought in about $21,000. So overall, revenues are very close to budget, and we don't, I don't anticipate any increases in revenue. As you go through the major expenditure categories, general government expenditures are below budget by about $12,000. And there's a whole series of pluses and minuses in that category as well. There's no major variance that really is worthy of attention. Now, on top of page three, looking at coal hall expenses are a little bit below budget. They're about $4,500 below budget. Repairs and maintenance is a significant part of that, that favorable difference. In terms of the town clerk, the clerk's expenses are about $31,000 against a budget of $36,000. Again, most of that expenditure has to be, difference in expenditures, a favorable difference in the health deductible for the town clerk. Other than that, most other things follow along pretty close to budget. Finance, we're pretty close, we're then $600 or $700 on finance. Accounting is about $700, $800 below budget. Delinquent tax collector is a little bit over, principally because he spent more on supplies, and some of his supplies go on for more than a year when he buys them. He has been successful in reducing the amount of delinquent taxes. I just received a payment today. Delinquent taxes are now down to about $56,000, which is an excellent status for them at this point. The treasurer's service, right on budget. What can I say? Actually, a favorable, about $600 favorable. But overall, total general government costs, we budgeted $324,000. We spent about $298 during the fiscal year. So that's about 92% of the budgeted expenditures were expended. Public safety, several different categories. Animal control, about $1,700 below budget. Emergency management, about 14, or excuse me, $4,000 below budget. We have the fire department. The fire department is below budget at this point, about $5,000. And law enforcement is slightly over budget. So we budgeted a total for public safety of about $117,000 and have spent about $107. So again, about 91% of budget. On public works, the highway administration subcategory, budget of $362, and expenditures of $339,000. So about 94% there. Some difference, a favorable variance in overtime wages. One category, the insurance premium, is a little bit lower, and the health deductible is significantly lower. We budgeted $18,000 for highway department employee health deductible. Actual expenditures are about $4,500, and that's a big, a big contribution as well. There are no other major variances, but all of them are favorable. Highway construction and maintenance, we're looking at a budget of $310, $311, but that includes $91,000 for the sidewalk. And if you take that off, you're looking at a budget of about $220,000, and actual expenditures are about $215,000. So pretty close there as well. In the equipment maintenance category, however, we're, we're looking at, I'm on page six now, we're looking at about $104,000 of actual expenditures against a budgeted $87,000. So you're looking at about $17,000, $18,000 over budget in highway maintenance. One, one part of that, of course, is the gas, oil, and diesel category, and we discussed that in prior meetings. We had a busy winter. There was a lot of highway use, and that, that burns fuel. And some of the vehicles had maintenance costs in excess of budget as well. I think most of them, it's fair to say. On the highway garage, pretty close, about $1,400 over budget, mainly in operating supplies. And other than that, it's, it's pretty, pretty good. Solid waste facility, again, I'm on page seven now. We're looking at about $139,000 in solid waste against a budget of $136,000. So $3,000 over budget. Just looking quickly, solid waste removal is about $2,000 of that, of that figure. And then there are other pluses and minuses that hazardous waste days are more expensive, but we had some favorable trade-offs in some other expense categories, like repairs and maintenance, for example. Streetlights, they're very close. I mean, this is, this is amazingly close, only about $30 off of budget. And the park, about $12,000 against a budget of $11,000. So close on the park as well. The cemetery, below budget, $20,000 against a budget of $24,000. Again, repairs and maintenance are below budget, and that's, the transfer to perpetual care funds is a function of how, how much we sell in lots, and the lot sales were down, so that number's down as well. Total public works, we're looking at about 90% of budget, and that's with the $90,000 thrown in. If you take that 90 out, we're looking at about 870 versus a budget of 860. Planning and development, we budgeted $22,000, spent about $15,300 in total. And, excuse me, that was, that was development. So in total, planning and development, we budgeted 28 and spent $21,000. That variance is mostly in the planning department, a little bit of it, about $600 of it is in the planning and the development review board, excuse me. Community appropriations, right on budget. You'll see that, that we're within $3 because of a budgeting thing with the town report. We're within $3 of budget on that, which we should be. County taxes are, are very close to, to budget. Debt service expenditures, as you might expect, are right on. So we've got total expenditures of about $1,615,000 in general fund against a budget of $1,759. So at this level, we're a plus, we're $57,000 of excess of revenues over expenses, but then we have to take into account what we transfer in from our designated and reserve funds and what we transfer out. When all that's done, our, if you pardon the expression, our bottom line for the year is approximately a minus $27,000. We budgeted to spend down about $120,000, and we spent down $27,000. So we're favorable against our budget from that perspective.
We budgeted to spend $120...
Of our fund balance.
And we only spent 27?
27 of it at this point.
Okay, so we're...
So we're ending up ahead of where we planned to be. We planned to be with a general fund balance of about $273,000 at the end of the fiscal year. We are at a general fund balance of $363,000.
Is that, my mental math come out to about $93,000 that were to the good on the fund balance?
We're $90,000, yes. Came around numbers. So we ended the year, our balance sheet at June 30, where we ended the year, shows us how... us having that fund balance of two-hundred-and-sixty-three thousand. That's our total assets, which are mostly cash in the bank and delinquent accounts receivable, and that's offset by liabilities. So our total assets were about four-hundred-and-seventy-eight thousand. We had approximately a hundred-and-fifteen thousand in liabilities, accounts payable, accrued payroll, the retirement contribution you just approved tonight, and some what's called deferred revenue, which is tax revenue that we recognize taxes receivable, but we only recognize them to the extent we anticipate collecting them within sixty days at the end of the year. So there's something called deferred revenue, which is an accounting, I'm going to use the word device and let me create shaky feelings, but it's an accounting method for recognizing the fact that we're not going to take this revenue into income in this fiscal year. It'll show up in the 2015 fiscal year. And so the difference between those two numbers and the general fund is about three-hundred-and-sixty-three thousand, the fund balance that we discussed. And I realize you don't have a chance, you didn't have a chance to look at these.
The fund balance number I should walk around with is three-sixty-three?
Yeah, in round numbers, three-hundred-and-sixty-three thousand.
Okay.
And in addition to that, we have several other funds and you're going to see this when we distribute the information to you and I'll be happy to come back and go through this in more detail. We have a group of funds we call designated funds and essentially these are funds that the town, the voters have approved, that are set aside for particular purposes. And the terminology designated reflects a, an accounting theory about how you categorize these funds. It's generally the theory is they can be undesignated by the voters as easily as they're designated. We have essentially a landfill fund, we have a Lister's reappraisal fund, a contingency fund, which has been set up, and a park fund, and Hook Memorial Fund, professional audit fund. And then we have a series of other smaller funds that I've put into the category of other designated. These funds are there, they're available for the purposes that are reflected in their title, and there's very little, very little. One of the funds has a, has the Lister's reappraisal fund has a thousand-dollar liability in it. Other than that, all of them, their financial position is essentially their cash balances and they're almost exclusively cash balances except for amounts that might be due to or from another fund. For example, if the general fund pays for an expenditure, it will charge that expenditure to the designated fund and then there'll be a due-to-from account. When the cash gets transferred back, it'll be settled and that will go away. So our designated funds had relatively little activity. The biggest activity was in the Lister's reappraisal fund and they spent about eleven thousand dollars in other professional services. And other than that, very little expenditures. Hook Memorial had some small expenditures for supplies. So other than that, there was not much activity in the designated funds during the year.
Maybe I missed it. Where does the money come from to go into those funds?
Well, some of that money comes from appropriations that the voters approve, some of that money in the case. I think the Lister's is a good example. There's a per parcel payment made by the state each year to the town to help fund reappraisals and that money goes to this particular fund. Yes, and that funds it. And then the Lister's reappraisal is far and away the biggest fund we have, is almost two-hundred thousand dollars in that.
And they have to go through you to access that fund?
Normally, they would go through the approval process to get the approval to spend the funds. You would approve it in a warrant and then it would be charged against the fund. My responsibility would be to account for it and to present the, present reports on what's happened to it, but I don't have any approval authority. That's vested in this board, yes.
The Hook Memorial, is that a equipment or something?
Yeah, that's a, that's basically a veteran's memorial fund and various amounts of funds of contributions have gone over that into the years. And there's been, there's been, let's see, there's a three-thousand-dollar appropriation by the town into this fund as well. It's the, the money in the fund is used for things like decorating veterans' graves. Recently, we, there was an individual in town who passed away and several members of the community chose to make a contribution to the fund in memory of this individual. And so that's how, that's typically the funds into the Hook Memorial come from the town appropriation and any memorial contributions that are made to it.
Bill, what's the difference between these funds and the sinking funds such as the fire truck sinking fund, grader sinking fund, all that sort of stuff?
Well, in some ways, there's no difference in that. They mechanically work the same way. It's just the purpose of the fund and how it's designated. I'm going to talk about, in a second, I'm going to get right to those because there's a whole other set of funds that we have.
I expected when you were talking funds, I expected to hear those, but...
You're going to in a second here. And I'm going to apologize to you. When you get a look at these numbers, you'll see that we have a pretty extensive set of funds. And, you know, we've set aside other funds, as Art's asking, for equipment replacement. We have a fire equipment fund, we have an equipment replacement fund, we have a sidewalk fund, we have a White Creek paving fund, and we have Coal Hall renovation fund. And some of these funds are really combinations of more than one purpose, just because of the history of how it's been done in the past. I mean, you're always trying to balance, you know, I don't want to, I don't want to come in here with a balance sheet or an activity statement that's about eight feet wide and has a hundred-and-two funds on it because it'll drive everyone mad, but we still have an obligation to report. And in these funds, the purpose of these funds, they're held to, as the title suggests, to replace equipment, to provide for, for example, a fire equipment fund. There's four components of that. There's an amount set aside for the fire warden's truck, there's an amount set aside for a fire truck, there's the amount that the fire department may collect with the reimbursement covenant that exists among fire departments. And there's a small amount set aside for a fireman's memorial. And so there are four funds within this one fund, the total balance of which is about a hundred-and-three thousand dollars. During the year, during the year, there was a sale of equipment, the biggest single item. That was a, from memory, that was the White Creek Fire Department, I believe, purchased a truck and this was the final payoff of that. So that was about ninety-four hundred dollars. Fire reimbursement was about five-hundred-and-sixty dollars and then we earned interest on it and we allocate interest to that. So, and there were no expenditures out of it. The town appropriated, well, I'll be careful how I say that, the town appropriated a thousand dollars to this fund and at the same time, the town transferred back ten thousand dollars to the general fund for fire usage. So it's a, it's a special pocketbook for fire-related expenditures for capital equipment. And the purpose of a capital projects fund generally is to accumulate funds, money and assets to be used for specific purposes like replacing fire equipment. The equipment replacement fund has a general equipment fund, it has a grader replacement fund, and it has a highway emergency component of it as well. So we have, we have about eleven thousand dollars set aside for equipment generically, generally. We also have thirty-seven or thirty-eight thousand set aside for a grader in this fund. And this is, this is pretty much what you were talking about when you were talking about sinking funds. This is some money that has been set aside. So if you had to replace a grader, you could choose to take and fund some of that grader purchase with this money. The sidewalk fund, as the title suggests, was money set aside for the sidewalk. Dave and I were discussing the White Creek paving job and what we did is to establish a separate fund called the White Creek Paving. And the purpose of this is to not have the income and expense of the white, the income being the grant that we're going to get, the reimbursement, have that run through the general fund and blow up the revenue and blow up the expenses, make them larger than they ordinarily would be. The theory is one time or on projects that don't happen regularly every day or every year would go into capital projects funds and regular operating expenses would go through the general fund. So that's the purpose of the White Creek Fund. At the end of fiscal year, ending June thirty-fourteen, we had spent about nineteen hundred dollars on this fund. We have obviously spent significantly more than that since June thirty and we are anticipating a reimbursement for a large percentage of what we're recovering. In terms of the Coal Hall Fund, that's got two components, the Coal Hall renovation piece and the garage. There's forty-four thousand in there for the Coal Hall renovation and about sixty-one thousand for the garage. And the town appropriated fifteen thousand dollars in total to that fund in two pieces. It was five thousand and ten thousand dollars at the last town meeting. And so that's essentially the capital projects fund. Think of that as money that's been earmarked for, I use the expression one time, but obviously you're going to replace equipment more than once in the town's history, but it's the type of thing, it's a major expenditure for something that's going to last for a period of time. Then in addition, we also have some funds called special revenue funds. And these are funds that are given to us by another organization, like state government is an example, they're grant funds. They're usually for a specific purpose. They're not as large in amounts as capital projects funds. And there's some conceptual overlap between capital projects funds and special revenue funds. And the distinction is not really always clear, but the point of it is that you set aside, you know, the state grants money, you get a grant to, you know, for example, public safety grant for communications equipment. You'd put the money in here or you'd spend the money out of there and get reimbursed in here. And it just shows that the revenue is restricted to a particular purpose. Whoever grants the funds says you can only use this for this, you know, communications equipment is an example. We've had, we've had recreation grants, we've had culvert grants, we've had a variety of things over the years and we've got funds represented by that. There's probably, oh, in round numbers, a dozen of these funds. They're all, in total, they only add up to about fifty thousand dollars, but they're there and we're trying to keep separate accounting of each of them so we can explain where the money went or if we have to issue reports where they came from. And then in addition to those funds, if that isn't enough, we also have the water department, which I haven't got a report for on the water department yet, and you've heard from them earlier. The water department is a, what's known as a proprietary or enterprise fund. It has special accounting rules. It's supposed to be treated like a business. So I drive Joe Herman and now Jim crazy because we have to depreciate assets and we have to recognize, it looks just like a business financial statement and it's different from the typical fund balance. And then the last thing that we have, what are known as fiduciary funds, which are the funds that the trustees manage, town funds that the trustees manage and oversee for the town. So that's the whole spectrum of funds that the town has. The accounting for local governments, if you look at last year's annual report, town report, you'll see how I've set those up. And it's essentially a moving target because the people that write the accounting rules are always redefining things and we'll probably have, we'll all have different terminology this year. But the overall message I want to leave you with tonight is that we have, we have, in my opinion, adequate resources to meet our needs. We've sent tax bills out. Tax bills went out on September eighteenth or nineteenth, which was a day earlier than last year. We're starting to get tax revenue in. We have collected approximately four hundred thousand dollars in tax revenue, so that's good. But we've also spent significant funds since July one. We've spent over five hundred thousand dollars. Part of the reason for that is, you know, our insurance premiums come in at the front end of the year, our debt service payments come in at the front end of the year, and that's, that five hundred thousand is not including the hundred-and-sixty-some-odd-thousand we spent on the paving project. So all of that's kind of front-end loaded. You know, we've drawn in a line of credit. We're now starting to see the benefit of the tax revenue coming in. I always hold my breath during the month of October to watch the bank balance every day to make sure we're okay and covered, and we are. And we'll see, as I said to somebody, we'll see a tsunami of revenue about November fifth, you know, it'll really start pouring in. Literally, there'll be days and I'll take in a half a million dollars or more in revenue. So that's the thumbnail sketch. I'm sorry that you don't have numbers to look at, but we'll get those to you and then, you know, you can certainly, you know, if you want to have me come back and we'll discuss them. And, you know, we'll have, we'll have the first quarter numbers for the next time you meet so you can look at those too.
Yeah, if you would, we'll put it on our calendar, if you'll put it on yours to give us a first quarter update next meeting because later on on the agenda, Dave is going to start explaining what our budgeting calendar is going to look like. That'll be the first number we look at.
Well, it's a good place to start. Any other questions?
Anything else for Bill? Thank you, sir.
I thank you. You're quite welcome and I hope I didn't, didn't talk too long. I know there's a lot here. Okay, good.
Sorry I didn't upload though. I see my other one up there.
I felt really good because I actually had them available a few days early.
I know, and I was uploading to Dropbox right when you gave me that. I said, yeah.
Yeah, I'm not sure what happened.
Because I see Howard Park and the Lees, we put it on at the same time. I don't know what happened to yours.
I mean, I did go in and change the names just to put agenda numbers on them, but I don't remember seeing anything from...
Maybe I hit the keyboard and wiped his out.
We have all sorts of...
...computers have ever done.
Interesting computer issues like PDFs that turn into dot something files that nobody can open. And we're dealing with all of that. Anyway, life goes on. Good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. We have, next on the agenda is the road forms update. Terry's on vacation, so Dave, I guess you're going to tell us about White Creek and other road issues.
We have a pretty short forms update today. The foreman's on vacation, the assistant foreman has an off-duty injury. He'll be out for the week. We have another person on vacation, so we have a very small crew this week. We're down to two people by Thursday, so there aren't many people around this week. White Creek, we did the repairs that the state wanted last week, put the wrap in and everything, put a lot of material down on it. The engineer, Chris, from the state was there when we started. We actually did, Terry did a little exploration and we got down to twenty-two feet through clay. It was stone clay. We never hit bottom. We might have been within a foot or two or we might have been a mile away. We put it back up to ten feet, installed the thing fine. There is almost like a wet concrete at the bottom today. I was out there throwing rocks at it to see and it just plunks right through. But I think that's just, from talking to Chris, kind of expected when you, you know, when you start working on it, it's going to start draining some more. The road hasn't depressed anymore. Keep an eye on it and...
It's a pretty good bump there. There's a pretty good shallow spot there though.
I'm sorry?
I think there's, I think it's, it's really...
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know if it's any worse. I don't know when the last...
Well, we talked last week with Terry whether we were going to shim... Well, we talked last week with Terry whether we were going to shim it again and with Chris and the decision was, we're just going to wait, just let it all calm down again, let it cold off and then we'll cover it one more time for winter to make it easier for plowing. We do have that bump there, definitely. I try and go by at least every other day and I don't really gauge any more.
Okay.
You know, maybe just a hair more today, but I think some did probably leak out. And, you know, we'll see where it goes.
Are them blocks still staying pretty good?
Yeah, the blocks, and the blocks actually were suggested, you know, that they don't even have to stay. But I was kind of reluctant to go along with that suggestion of pulling them, it just seemed like we were begging trouble to pull them.
If you want to lose the road, take them out.
Yeah, yeah, I was like, no, they've got to be doing something, they weigh enough, so just leave them be.
They're about two ton a block.
Yeah, so that, and there's a lot, lot more material on the side of that now. So I think it's stabilized, it may depress a little bit as it gets readjusted. And like I said, we'll shim it again before winter and.
Just as a suggestion, Dave, you could drive a grade stake up by the edge of the blacktop and grab another one down in the brook, run a string between them and measure down to what their grade is now.
Yeah.
And check that every so often, it'll tell you how much.
Yeah.
Because it can move and you won't even see it.
Yeah, yeah, it's, I think the big thing that we've addressed is it's not going to fail. You know, it might depress a little bit, which you might have to work at, but it would take a great force to move everything that's just been put on it.
It has been a dry September too, sixth driest on record or whatever.
Yeah, well, I tell you.
Next couple of days we'll be telling.
When we, it wasn't dry there, when we started digging, because I went up when Terry started, and the bucket goes through and the water starts popping out the side. You know, it was like a stream just popped out of the side. It's, I.
It's typical.
Yeah, it's, it's an issue. And we'll just see how it goes through the winter into next spring.
Yep, okay.
It's the best we have for right now.
Did we get any state aid on that?
No, but we're at the juncture now, we have 8,000 just in shim on the thing, plus other labor, plus the stone we just used, man hours. We get into something in the spring, we really have to start pushing the state for, we have to have a solution. And this was, they started with the underdrain, which really led to the side coming out a little bit. So now this is the second solution. If we need a third solution, I think we need some state money to fix this connector.
They didn't put any outlet drains in that to let the water out?
Yeah, we have one.
Oh, they did?
Yeah. Well, originally, the drain they put in stopped before it, before it reached the river. Now, we've extended that pipe so it pours into the river.
What's the flow out of the pipe?
I haven't seen any yet. But that doesn't mean there's not going to be some tomorrow or there was some yesterday when it was raining.
As long as you've got a place for it to go.
Yep, and it will drain through the rock and the cover underneath and, which is the whole purpose of that, to let the water through and keep the material.
Right, but what will make that go is if that builds up pressure and it's got no place to go.
Yeah.
The road's going to go.
Which is why we didn't do the wall, the barrier, because that's just building a dam.
Yeah.
This will let the water pass through and just keep the material behind.
You've got to give it a place to go so it doesn't build up pressure.
Yep, and it has that now. And it can definitely drain out at both ends and any water above it should come through that pipe we put in.
Right.
And again, I don't think anybody's guaranteeing this is the solution, the one-shot solution to a problem that's been around for decades is.
Yeah.
So, you know, we'll see, we'll see what happens come the spring. But I do agree, if this starts getting to, we have to start digging out the whole road to look for a solution, we have to have the state involved in this. And it is a connector road, it is used by interstate travel, so I think that's important. The rest of, the shoulderstone is in, the line striping, the yellows are done last week, the whites were scheduled for this week, the fog lines postponed to next Monday because they don't want to come in and be rained on. So they will be here Monday to do the white lines. And then that'll close out the entire project there.
So it's got yellow in the center and white in it?
Yeah, and that was really holding this up because that was a state contract. LND could have been here two weeks ago to do the white lines. They can't do the white lines without the yellow lines because you paint the white off the yellow, so it was just a matter of waiting. And they finally got to a, I think they did Thursday last week.
It was Thursday night.
Yeah, yeah.
They did it at night, didn't they?
No, they do.
I ran into it. I saw all these lights and I'm thinking, oh my God, I'd be killed, but it was amazing.
Yeah, well, that company, they load up and they just paint until the truck's empty.
Yeah.
And they've called, I know another road department where they've called at 8 o'clock at night, said, we're here. And they just start painting down the road until they run out of paint.
Brilliant job.
Drive back to Massachusetts and get more. They could have some here. Those are the main issues for the garage for this week. We're going to do some little odds and ends around here. Ken, you had mentioned this, the little step out here, the walkway. We're going to take this, the brick out and properly compact that and build it up and fill it in so it's level and drains back to the driveway. We hope to get to that on Wednesday, I think, or Thursday, when just the two guys are here, they'll just work on that.
The crew's doing it?
Yeah, the road crews, it's not, it's perfect because this.
And just pull a paving box.
Yeah, yeah. And I know who put it in, they told me, and it just kind of, they had some sand, they just put it down and it just settled. So if you compact it right, it'll stay at the right level for a long time. And all the bricks are cut, which makes it quite easy. And that's really it for the road for this week. We'll be back next week and we'll have a crew again. We're pretty short this week.
Thank you. Item number nine is nomination of a health officer. We advertised for a health officer. Nobody raised their hand. By default, that job goes to the chair of the select board. Unless one of you would like that job, I'd be happy to hand it over to you. I take by the laughs and the smirks that you don't want that job. So the procedure is that you need to nominate me, or we need to nominate a health officer, send that to the state for approval, and then I can be the health officer. The reason we're bringing this up is we've had a few health issues, health complaints lately that we're, we're dealing with, with certified letters at this point, but yeah, if push comes to shove, a health officer may have to declare, you know, health action be taken. So we need to get that in place. One of the things that you need to do is send a brief letter of why you think I would make a good health officer. I took the liberty of writing that up and sending it to you and if.
I think I swore I wrote it. I swear I wrote it, no.
Excuse me, I'm mistaken. It does say Jim Mitch Race on there. And so.
Fine.
If, what we need now, I guess, is a motion to nominate Tim Skagans for health officer.
So moved.
Second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That is unanimous, so I will print this off. I'll get Dave to print it out because I don't have access to the printer here, get Mitch to sign it, we send it to the health department.
Okay.
They'll come back and say, yes, we approve your nomination. And then we'll come back and actually, I think we have to then vote me in as health officer, I believe is the procedure. Item 10, rethinking the salt shed expansion. Dave and I have been talking about that. Terry proposed that we expand the salt shed by extending the roof line up to 30 feet.
It would come in just shy of 30 feet. And if you're familiar, out the window there, it would go the length of the two blocks that are at the end of it now. It's a good 16 feet out and it would increase the height probably 10, 12 feet. The theory is to get another 30 to 40, maybe 50 ton of salt in. Of course, the issue is it's on the property line. There's just issues with tripling the load that we have there now. We have 60 ton, 60 ton has worked for the town for a long time. Last year, there was a possibility of a shortage. Last year was also almost double the average snow all over the East Coast. New Jersey was way up, there was a lot more demand on salt last year. It's just the, you know, putting that much salt right on your property line is the part that, you know, this has been here a long time. I understand there's not even a bottom to it. Because I asked about, we have to pave this new part in because we have to make it an impermeable surface. And they didn't think it was underneath what's left there. So that needs to be addressed somehow too. But we do need to get salt in. We do have a contract for the same amount of salt we used last year and we can get that delivered. To me, I, you have to wonder if, we have 60 ton and we get down to 10 and we order 60 again, there's not much difference between getting down to 20 ton, you know, when we have 180 available. If we can't get it, we can't get it. You know, it's, we can store 60 in place until we make a decision on where we're going with this stuff, where we expand this and, you know, increase the possibility of it doing something that we don't intend it to do.
Has that been brought before the zoning?
No, it hasn't, no, because it has to be warned, it has to go before the DRB. Part of, part of getting a variance, building on your property line is that it has to be a condition that was not caused by the applicant and we most certainly are causing this. So I don't know if this, you know, that's not my department, the DRB has to decide whether or not.
Well, yeah, but isn't that just a continuance of a pre-existing?
There is no continuance of a pre-existing use. You can, we can use that forever. We triple the size of it.
Long as you don't change it.
Yeah, yeah. But if you're tripling the size, it has to be approved.
You would not think it can be approved, right?
Well, it's for the board to decide.
It's in policy, right? Probably wouldn't be approved.
There's ways they can look at it, they can take into account things, I wouldn't want to pre-decide for them. It's not my place to do that. There are things that they have to look at in the list of factors and of variance that they have to go through. I mean, my main point with having it go that way is that the town is not exempt from its own rules. We have to, we have to follow these and make the application. We have to present the case to the board for them to decide whether or not it's, this is an appropriate use here.
I'd like to, I think the motion that we do apply, not that we build it, but we got it one year, don't we, from the time you.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'd like to see what happens if, what the zoning, what the DRB says. Isn't going to cost us anything and we may, we may decide we need it.
No, it'll cost a newspaper ad.
That's good.
And then we can present it to the board and we don't, you're correct.
Let's go with that. We have a motion to, to apply to the DRB for the salt shed expansion. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, continue the discussion.
Okay.
Second.
Yeah, okay, we're in discussion about that point. Art, did you?
No, just, it would just be.
I don't know how it'll be approved by the DRB.
Well, let's, let's find out.
Yeah, we'll deal with them.
Well, Mike, go ahead.
I was just saying, I think it was in the banner, but I can't remember where I saw, they're expecting the salt shortage again this season.
Was that in the internet today?
Yeah, okay.
They figured another winter like.
Yeah.
Worse than last year.
And I can't remember what, it's the source that's the problem.
I don't remember either, but it was, it was the northeast.
Yeah.
And Midwest is supposed to get.
Let's talk to them.
A lot worse winter this year than we had last year.
Yeah, so it might be worth the effort.
And if you don't listen to a weatherman, they're probably right.
My thought in rethinking this is I'm, I'm worried about what we're doing there. I mean, we're, we're letting salt leak out of that into, you know, it's not properly foundationed the way it should be. It's there because it's always been there. We're grandfathered in for that reason. If we start expanding it, we're not grandfathered in, we may or may not get approved, but we're also increasing what a result is leaking into our neighbors. We're adding 10 or 20 feet to an eyesore for our neighbors there. It just seems, to me, it's kind of a hard call. I mean, we're weighing the, the, what's, you know, could be a safety and health issue in salt leaking out of the salt shed against a safety and health issue of running in a salt in the winter for the roads.
The thing is, Tim, if you get salt in undercover where it's not going to get wet, it's going to be no different than it is out there now. Because salt does not bother anything if it's in where it can be dry. It's when it gets wet, it's when it spreads and goes places.
Right, right, but I mean, it's getting wet, I mean, it's.
Well, yeah, but a lot of that is when they're taking it out there loading the truck or spilling it. And you can't help it because salt just wants to go where it wants to go.
Right, right. I mean, the salt is getting wet because it's in a lean-to, it's not closed in. And we're, we're increasing by a, by a factor of three, whatever, whatever we're doing there.
The other thing that will come up with the DRB is, you know, we can't go with, we're going to stick up two telephone poles, some clavards and a tin roof. You know, we're going to have to have some kind of reasonable approach to it, so we're going to have to include, because I mentioned this, Terry, we have to have a base, you know. I mean, it really has to be better than, than we're just sticking up some boards and throwing salt in. It's going to be a little bit more complicated, but.
I don't think black, I don't think black topping just inside would cost that much.
Well, if there's anything in there, you've got to take everything out before you can pave it.
Yeah.
And I don't, I, I worked on that when they first built it. There's no, there's no black top.
Okay.
All right, well, that clears it out.
History, so.
But what I'm saying is I don't think it costs that much to black top if we.
Oh, it wouldn't, but I mean, it's just you've got, you've got to get all the salt, get it all cleaned out.
Yeah.
And you can't, it's going to start getting cold and then you can't get blacked up, so that's not an indefinite open end, you can do that anytime.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, that we can solve because we can just do that. That might just be prudent to do anyway, just black top it whether we expand it or not. You know, that we could just do.
Good point.
Okay, any more discussion on the motion of agreeing to send the expansion of the salt shed to the DRB? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Aye. Stand. Motion carries 3, 2, 0.
All right, we'll get it on the hearing. I'll let the whole board know the date, we're going to have the hearing in case anybody wants to be there. I mean, I would have to be Terry and myself at minimum to present it to the DRB. And we'll take it from there.
Yeah, I'll be there. All right, item 11, authorize hazard mitigation plan for FEMA. Everybody saw that?
Mm-hmm.
We all read it very carefully, all 100,000 pages of it.
It is. Anyone freshen up on it? I was impressed.
I was still fresh enough on page 10 or so to notice that you referenced Central Vermont Power System as opposed to Green Mountain Power.
Yeah, probably has to be.
That's the only change that I would suggest we make in it.
Okay, I'll pass that along to Mike and we'll change that.
So motion to authorize a hazard mitigation plan to FEMA. Just send it up to FEMA for approval. Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Can I, as I was reading this, I was thinking that there was a lot of recommendations to notify property owners of different strategies for hazards. I'm wondering if there are brochures available that we could distribute or have available to people.
There are.
Because I keep referring to the website and I was thinking, a town, a town meeting would be a great place at least to start and maybe have somebody there to hand them out or whatever. Or have a table for people to access.
I can talk to Jerry Madison about that and it comes under FEMA and FEMA has brochures to cover everything.
They must, yeah.
Certainly, we can make links on our website to, to online campus too. Yeah, let's do that too.
Wish they had pictures of all the invasive plants. That was the, well, that was the scariest one because I've got them.
You can't hurt them.
You can't, you can't, you can't get rid of them.
Burning Bush is one of them, isn't it?
Oh, yeah, and Barberry is another one, you know? We had to go out of state to get it.
Proud of it. Well, is the support of the Greenway Resolution that we talked about last time. Bruce Learman, I believe, was in it, the gentleman who spoke to us. We agreed that we support the bicycle way through Shasbury and I was charged with filling in the blanks of the motion. You have seen that? Are there any changes anyone would like to make to that? Or did you see that? to that? Or, did you see that? I might have just done this today.
Yeah, I, I essentially just took his motion, filled in the blanks for, you know, town and put in Shasbury, and then there was, there was one clause I didn't understand, so I just took it out.
Yeah, I know, it's one clause.
I don't want to resolve to do something I don't understand.
Motion to approve the resolution for the U.S. Bicycle Route Seven.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Okay. And now, Town Administrator's Report, which is longer than the rest of the agenda. I accused David of a coup when I saw that.
But it'll be quick, it'll be to the point. Here we go. The roof repairs on the slate, we're finished by Doxy last week. Although, just highlighted another issue as part of the steeple came off. We had seen that one of the corner pieces was loose. As soon as he started repairing the slate, it came, it fell off. We did try to screw, or he was up in the bucket trying to screw it back in, at least to hold it, and then the material wouldn't hold it at all. So, that'll come up in a little bit when we talk about spring repairs, we knew this was coming, and at least it's not going to fall during the winter. But the slate is done. This roof over here, over the staircase and everything, is in, you know, in my opinion, in dire need of repair from having roofed houses before. I have an estimate from them, from Doxy, also for nineteen hundred and fifty-six dollars to strip the roof, put on new underlayment, new, new shingles, put in ice and water shield on the top. Currently, there isn't adequate protection to keep the water from, and ice from leaking back in underneath to the wood. It would install architectural shingles, fabricate and install approximately fifty-one linear feet of drip edge, and install the riglet and counter flashing at the wall. There's an option that would bring it up to twenty-four fifty for a steel standing seam, which I don't, you know, that's kind of more an architectural thing. I think, I think shingles probably look better on this building than doing the seams. So, if that's all right with the board, I think that'd be a nice thing, get it done before winter, especially getting it protected so there's no water getting at the wood, because replacing that would be quite expensive, I think. So-
Without objection, that does not require a vote to, to approve, because it's under three thousand?
It's under three thousand, so just, we're ahead with that.
Thanks for bringing it to our attention, though.
Yes. And just generally on coal hall renovations, because we're going through things with everybody in the building. I'm looking to get this with the money Bill had mentioned before. There's approximately fifty-three thousand dollars in various parts of the coal hall reserved to fix the building. We have a bathroom downstairs that is not handicapped accessible. It doesn't have the, the proper equipment to meet that. That would be phase one. There's talk of, of minor interior renovations, maybe moving the whole bathroom over a little bit to better use the space downstairs. The bathroom is actually enormous, but it's mostly just dead space in a building that needs every inch we can get out of it. So, we are talking about some minor moving of interior walls, which, you know, they're not load-bearing, so it's kind of a small thing. The major, major thing we want to look at is the bathroom, get proposals on that. That is going to chew up a, a good piece of the money. But to not have a completely functioning ADA bathroom is, is not really appropriate for here. Interior painting, you can see from the walls in here, they've been patched for a long time. All the walls downstairs have been patched, and nobody seems to remember this, it started years ago. So, I want to just get some estimates from some companies. Again, I think the best time for this, as we're coming into budget season and everything else, is after town meeting. Just start scheduling people after I bring the proposals to the board, and just start getting a lot of this done. We'll have to prioritize some things. The ceiling, which I know has come up a number of times, is really, really expensive, and I don't think we're ready for that. But there's other things in here that, that could be brought up to make the entire appearance of the building a lot more acceptable.
You mean, expensive to replace those?
Well, yeah, I mean, to, to, I mean, this is undoubtedly a very nice ceiling there, but restoration and, and everything, I mean, I can look at some estimates, but I have a feeling that's not going to be one of the priorities this, this year. Because another thing I'd like to spend money on is the exterior. It's getting dull. It needs to be painted alone. The corner piece coming off the steeple is just indicative of, somebody has to get up there and start looking at this thing and seeing that it's all in one piece. And I'll bring the basic, the basic maintenance up to date, and then we can look at, you know, things like the ceiling in here and, and other changes. Could be some air conditioning, not up here, it's just not possible. But downstairs, we can use some non-window units that would make the area a lot better to work in the summer as it becomes quite unbearable in the afternoon. Up here, there are no full-time employees, so even from when I was working up here, you're only in here for four hours. You can schedule, we come in the morning and you leave, it's not too bad. When I was in here in the afternoon, it was pretty bad, but I'm going to get a few more fans and we'll just, you just have to make this space work.
Let's price some curtains on these windows.
And curtains for the windows, yeah.
The string in the bathroom curtains is an embarrassment.
Yeah, so curtains will be on there, too. And, and that's kind of part of it. We'll, we'll bring the maintenance up so the building looks a lot better than it does now. There's no real structural thing that anyone's pointed out to me. It's just really maintenance and, it's just falling behind. And fifty thousand won't go a great distance, but used wisely, you can make it a, you can make quite the difference in the appearance of the building. And just don't look up at that part, because that's, that's not going to be in it.
But while you're at it, let's find out what it would take to make it look better, even if we're not going to-
Yeah.
Place the tin, if there's some way to, you know-
Yeah.
Patch it and paint it or something.
There's certainly something that, that doesn't have to stay like that. That, that could be fixed, if not with tin, but it could be fixed, so it's not falling, yeah.
There's got to be something, I'm sure of that.
Yeah, any kind of fascia board on there, just, just decorative, try and match it in, so it's not just gone.
Mitch, there's nobody from historic, from the state, historic-
Well, yeah, I mean, they would probably, because this is on a-
Yeah.
Preserving, I mean, they, they, there are companies that will take a picture of a stamp and produce-
Yeah.
Material for you. We only need like, those are five-foot sections, maybe four sections of that particular stamp.
Yeah.
And maybe all those, that one right across the top there, those stamps, and get those corrected and paint it, shape it and tape it.
Yeah, and then-
Desirable though it may be, I don't think we're required to preserve history on the inside, though, are we?
Right.
Correct.
So, I mean, we can think about, you know, slapping some plaster on and painting it just to make it look better without doing period tin on the roof.
Yeah, and there are things like in, in that corner over there where it's all discolored and everything, and above that window. We want to have a little bit stronger look on that, just to make sure we're not, you know, bleeding water into the walls there or something.
Right.
It's the major issues to, to, to be looked at. You know, like I said, fifty thousand to, to get up to speed here isn't a great deal of money, but it's enough to get this going. If the board would like the money moved out this year, we can make this building look a lot, a lot better. So, I'll, I'll be bringing you prices on that as we go through. But as I said, this is more a, a warning, a heads up, because I don't think it's practical to consider this work being done before town meeting, just because with all, this season gets too busy, and it's all enclosed in here. What's the Coal Hall Park? In, in Howard Park, we have a grant, in talking with the Recreation Committee, I toured the park. We've changed the scope, they were going to apply for a, a little playground set. We do have approximately twelve thousand in the park reserves right now. We can get that, we can apply to get that matched by Arm of the State. That grant is due by the end of this week. I have the pictures and the whole thing done here, I just need the letter from the town, from the Select Board. And I've spoken to the woman in charge of it up there. It is, this kind of project is what they're looking for. It's restoring a park. We're going to address the, everything, starting with the electrical. There's some electrical issues over there that need to be addressed right away. There is the tennis courts. If we get the full grant, we can repair the tennis courts, we can restore at least one of the basketball courts, we can fix the dugouts, the fascia boards that are rotting, replace one of the roofs, have estimates from Doxy again on that, just, these are preliminary estimates. But we can pretty much match out the twelve thousand. If they do it, we'll spend every penny of the twenty-four thousand. And that'll include upgrades to security. We'll have a system that, that is movable, that, that we can use to really detect if something's going on, which is, goes a long way to saving parts of the park. There's a lot to be done over there, and again, the money's in the reserve, and even if we don't get the grant, I think a lot, some of this repair has to be done now. The, some of the roofs there, I don't know if you can see this, this is one of the pictures I'm sending up. The shingles are all curled and broken off, and it's, you know, pretty soon you start losing the whole building. Paint, I, I had on here, but we'll drop that off, we'll get a community effort, and we'll paint the buildings, because the electrical is going to chew up the rest of the twenty-four thousand. If we don't get it, I'm going to go ahead with the electrical anyway. I just don't see that as an option. I was able to access things, and I don't think that's right. I need to change that. And then we'll move on in a progression in the spring, depending on whether we get the, the grant or not. But baseball wants to come back in the spring, and they're looking forward to a, a much more energetic season over there. So, if we could get the buildings up in shape and a, a water fountain, which is amazingly expensive, buying a water fountain, it's over two thousand dollars just to get a water fountain. But these are the things that we can get going. And like I said, the twelve thousand is there, so if the board approves as we move forward, the, the, the Rec Board is all in favor of it. Dean and Helen have been bringing these things up for a long time, but they just don't have any way to get it moving. So, I've been trying to work with them to get it moving. And we'll get some of the things restored. I'm hoping for the grant, because then we could get the tennis court done, which would be really nice. It's a nice thing.
The, the gates are wide open all the time now, right? And there's just no way of closing them.
Well, the gates, you know, I went into how we're going to prioritize what we need to do.
Yeah.
The gates will require a lot of money. And we can open them in the morning, it's really closing them at night, and you can't just ask someone to go close the gates at night, because they're going to go down, they're going to find somebody who's basically going to tell them, you know, get lost, and probably not those terms. So, you know, we need to, to figure out a way to do that. But there will be an adjustable security system in the park, so that if, if something happens, we will be able to hopefully identify anybody who would be doing anything. Because we do have to protect it, we're going to put money into it, we have to protect it. Unfortunately, Arlington's been having problems, Wallingford has been having a tremendous amount of problems. And, you know, if we, if we start putting twenty-four thousand into the park, we want it to be kept up nicely.
North Shaft Lions has indicated that if we can control security, they're willing to put money and effort into it.
That's great, that's great. And I do think security is, is attainable there.
It is.
It's just, it's just, it's just a thought process and kept on-
We had gone up there earlier this year, Dave, and-
Sorry?
We had gone up there-
Yeah.
On that. As far as those gates go, you don't need a gate on there, you can just put a good big heavy cable on there, you'd do everything a gate will do. As far as keeping cars on, it'd be a lot cheaper.
Yeah, there's, there's, you know, in talking with, with the Rec Committee, it was kind of, we're not thinking of what's, what's the cheapest way of doing it, but what's the best way to do it, to make it an attractive opening to the park and make it look like a place you want to go into. The, the chain does work real quick. If these gates could be pulled together, it's also making sure there's no access around them. Because if there's any way around, people are going, going to get in. The other problem is, in that park, there's hundreds of ways in. So, you have to have the security system anyway, because it's secluded.
Right.
So, are you talking, we talked about security last spring?
Yeah.
Were you talking cameras?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
A looping camera, twenty-four hour loop or something, or?
Yeah, there's, there's, there's basically trail cameras, there's all cameras that only activate when you're there. There's cameras, none of these would be fixed cameras, which is the best way to do it. They can always be moved, they would be moved frequently by myself or, or other people, and, you know, you can just make it so that you're just not going to walk in and walk away. If it's nighttime, they'll activate, there'll be infrared, and they'll pick you up. So-
The big undecided in my mind about the park is how we're going to deal with opening and closing the gates, and like you said, in particular, closing it.
Yeah.
I don't see how you can think about, you know, asking somebody to do that without paying them for an hour to go up there and do that. And I don't see how you could ask somebody to do that for less than ten dollars an hour. So, you know, that's ten dollars a day for half a year. So, it's, you know, minimum, we're talking about something in the nature of a two thousand dollar job, which, and I'm not sure we can get anybody to do that. But if, you know, for, say we, for, say for example, we could get the constable to agree to, to close the gate every night, I think that would be something to consider. It would be, you know, ten times what we pay the constable now, but I think it's something we, we might, I mean, might want to think about.
Yes, I understand that at some point, and I don't know if this was an informal agreement or what, but the sheriff, a deputy was closing it at night, but that drifted away. I don't know if we could get an agreement with the sheriff for them to do it, because that really is asking a lot, you have to be there, so.
Yeah.
That would be more than twenty-five bucks.
That would be twenty-five dollars an hour. Well, as part of their, their regular patrol, which we're already paying them for.
What would happen, Dave, if you put on electric gates up there with a timer on them, and a big sign that says, "Gates open at such, such a time and closes at such a time."
Yeah, you know, there's, the, things like that just always trouble me from the person who's not paying attention and is trapped inside.
Well, well, next time they will.
You know, the problem is, if they have a medical emergency or something, and they get trapped in there, and they can't get cell service, we've trapped them in the park, you know, this is just, these things run through.
Yeah, and I mean, we don't want, somebody who's not going to leave is not somebody we want to leave locked in there. That's exactly the person we want locked out of the park.
Really?
So, yeah, but I think when we go through budget season, I think, you know, we ought to think about what we're willing to budget to open and close that gate. And, and David, thank you for taking that list that we generated in the spring and finding the, the reserve funds and this grant, and really making it happen.
Yeah, I think with any luck, we'll get it, and by April, you'll have a new park. Pretty much. Truck financing update, we've been approved. It's, it's in the process now, everything's in Wilmington's office, he has to read through it. The truck is delivered to Chives, is it? Viking, Viking Chives and Wetherspoons?
Yes.
Yeah, and, yeah, up in Burlington, that went up today. I believe this one did go through, yes, this one did go through, so you all have a chance to look through this. It's pretty standard, we've dealt with this company before. The master lease that's up there now caught my eye, because it says October first, two thousand and twelve, but that was agreed to back then, when we bought other things through them. Wilmington raised that question today, so I'm, I'm responding to him, you know, that here's your letter from two thousand and twelve, and, you know, whatever you have to do, because part of, I think it's D, Appendix D in this, requires the letter of counsel approving of the whole thing. So, this will probably take a couple of weeks, and as soon as this is done, we'll get the check, well, we'll send them the check. No, I said that backwards. We'll get the check to send to DeLory and Viking, and we'll, we'll be done with it. It will add about thirty-seven thousand on all said and done for the five years, and then we get the truck at the end.
You won't pay Viking till the job is done, because it just went up?
No, we have to go up and approve it. It, it all has to be approved. There was, unfortunately, for, for DeLory, this was approved in, in, back in June, and the financing part wasn't started until after I was here, so he would like the money quickly. And I spoke to Jeff this morning, and like, it's, it's approved, it's in the last stages. The truck should be done in, I think, three weeks, and-
Hopefully.
Yeah, hopefully, and unless there's some holdup on the legal end here, that's the last thing in line. Like I said, it's a little unfortunate, the timing for DeLory, but there's nothing we can really do about that. The forklift, the forklift, I sent pictures and spoke with DeBoer and King. They really don't want to do this, but if they did it, the fees would start at a minimum- They really don't want to do this, but if they did it, the fees would start at a minimum of $8,000. And they would have to, and he was quite clear that that would be about the minimum, absolute minimum, it would quite go quite a bit higher. They don't particularly do this, it has to meet a very specific ANSI code for this kind of modification. He was clear it would take a lot of research on their part. He suggested I could go find an expert in it, who would certainly charge me expert fees, and that would go even north of what they're talking about. To get arms, which then also have to get approved, the arms could be $10,000 to $15,000, and these are bucket loader arms to go on a forklift, so I'm not sure how.
It was a bucket loader.
It came as a forklift. They, the army converted it to a forklift?
No, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I got it backwards. It was originally a forklift.
Yeah, well, that's what I mean, now, you know, and it's not a John Deere commercial forklift, it's a John Deere made-for-the-military forklift, that now we're converting to a bucket loader with civilian arms or military arms, and that's going to raise issues on its own. I spoke to the guys up in Burlington at the surplus place, and they certainly don't want it back, and it's ours, and they seriously suggested we sell it, because we could undoubtedly find a buyer for it pretty quickly. We're into this, I think about $11,000, $12,000 to get this thing up and running. You know, we're at least at 14, 15, going a good deal north of that, I think. Because if we get surplus arms, everyone's telling me it's $10,000 to $15,000, and then we got to put them on, and they have to be inspected. And then we have a thing that just picks up salt and puts it in a truck. It's a lot of money. We can sell it. I ran this by Terry before he went on vacation, and he kind of conceded, well, maybe we should sell it.
I think it's, if we, yeah, if we spend that much money, it's, the only thing it's useful for is working out here, you know, filling the trucks with salt and sand. I mean, it would shave off, like, for every one bucket of that, it's two buckets with the thing we have.
Yeah, but what if OSHA catches you with it?
Well, no, no, it's not moving until you go through the whole thing. It's either, forget what's going on out here, because that would be 10, you know, DeBoer and King's eight to start, going north of 10, we're hiring an expert who's going to be more expensive to certify what's been done out here, because it has to meet very strict standards. If you get, if you get the other arms, that's at least $10,000 to $15,000. Then you have to have it checked again. Deere has to prove it, it goes on and on, and, you know.
Well, if Deere will.
If they will.
Right.
And then you have, if they won't, then you have to go back to an engineer, and get an engineer to approve it. It's, a forklift should be a forklift. If we'd gotten a bucket loader, it would have been different.
Right.
Who would buy it, somebody for the motor? Is that?
Well, I mean, all you can do is sell it for parts. If anybody uses that, they're in the same boat we are.
But they put it back as a forklift, and OSHA catches you with that.
I mean, I've got a lot of certain time and effort in that thing now. I probably decided to sell that.
You know, I think we
Year and a half ago.
I mean, we have, forgetting, and I don't know if it's ever been calculated, how much time and labor by the highway department's gone into this, but certainly we have over $11,000 already in shipping this from across the globe to here, so I think, you know, if we got, whatever we got, it would be in the plus column, and we just move on.
Okay.
Yeah, we need to cut our losses.
Motion to sell the federal surplus forklift.
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Stayed? Sell that beast.
All right, it's gone. Well.
Well, it clear up spite space in the garage, too.
Yeah, it's just tucked over here in the bush trees. It hasn't moved, I don't even know the last time it's been on, so. Okay, we'll just move that out. Household hazardous waste day was, was fine, wasn't overly busy, it was just kind of a steady stream, one, two people, if it backed up four people at a time, I think it only did that a couple of times. Went very smooth, not an overwhelming amount of things, mostly paint, we did five full pallets of paint, and about four or five pallets of assorted things. Not that many bulbs this time, which was nice. They were here, they got here at 7:30, and they left at 3:00. And, you know, there's nothing remarkable to report on the day, except that thankfully it didn't start pouring till about 12:30. That was nice, we all thought we were going to get drenched all day.
Hey, when's the scale coming?
The scale.
Scale.
The scale. The scale is a tormented journey. I was on the phone with them today about the scale. It is going to be rapidly moving here within two weeks.
Want me to go pick it up?
Well, we can't pick it up, because they have to bring it and certify it.
Oh, and calibrate it.
Well, yeah, because, you know, it's, it's just what it is.
We do, they have to calibrate it.
We're weighing beef or something.
Yeah, if we weigh garb, it's funny, if we weigh garbage and charge a dollar, it has to be certified by the state.
Sure.
So, you know, and Shelley's tired of $1.
I know.
But, you know, we don't, it's, that's just the way it is. So they have to come up and calibrate it, and like I said, the whole point of this is, we won't be paying $400 to $600 for someone to drive down, look at it, and then tell us it's broken. That's just the bad part. It is a delay, and it, you know, the world of scales is confusing, so. Back to bids for a minute here, or our reserve funds, Oliver Duran came in today, they have a pump that needs to be replaced on the brush truck. He brought me three estimates. The one he likes is for 2115, and this is just a Honda-powered pump, so that they can generate 60 gallons per minute. The one they have, the gasket's all blue, they're borrowing one from the Forest Service right now. So, because this also is not a bid item, I'm just going to check with Bill for the reserves and order the pump for the brush truck. Okay, this week. Okay. And just a brief on the budget plans for the coming year. I didn't have a chance to get this out this afternoon, so I just have a couple of copies for everyone. This is just thinking off the top of my head for a schedule here, there's some important dates on it. The first day for posting warnings for town meeting, where we have, the first day we can put them out is January 22nd. The last day is February 1st, and that's the last day to post to the website. We have a website, the warning has to be posted in its entirety on the website. Petitions, the last day for petitions is January 19th. If we don't have any petitions filed at the last minute, we could approve the warning at that regular select board meeting on the 19th. If there are last-minute petitions, we have to give the five days, so we might have to have a special meeting on the 26th to approve the warning. And the rest of it is just starting up in November 3rd. I'll ask all the department heads to have a general idea of their budgets in, I think that's customary here at the beginning of November. At our regular meeting on the 3rd, we can discuss any major issues, anything anybody's thinking of for the next fiscal year. I was going to meet with the various department heads the weeks of the 10th to the 14th, for two reasons, because then I get to sit down, talk to them in detail about the department, and I get to learn things, and they get to tell me what they'd like to do. And then the 17th, 1st, and 15th, we can have special budget meetings starting before the select board meeting start, I mean, like, 5 o'clock. From what I've seen in the past, that seems to be the traditional way here, is to have a two-hour meeting beforehand. And then hopefully by January 5th, we'll have the whole thing wrapped up. And the actual procedural things, you know, we can work out the details, and most importantly, where, you know, the board wants to go with the budget for next year. But this is just, like I said, that's why I just said, this is very brief, preliminary to give a timeline, kind of a idea to keep dates in your head now, for where we have it. We have plenty of time, and like I said, mostly, I would think by the December 1st meeting or the November 17th meeting, have a fairly decent idea of where the departments are going. I don't think there's a lot of big changes coming from any of the departments. There are things to look at in the road department, we have chloride, should be budgeting more for chloride, different amounts for stone, you know, things like that. I know, I've heard that they're talking about replacing the one ton, and that's another loan, that's more equipment on there. And we're up quite a bit on the debt reserve at the moment. I would like to think we can get another year out of that truck, it's not that old. But other than that, we'll have to see what each department has to say, and what they need to do. Like I said, mostly this is just to get the timeline out there, so we can start thinking about it. And, again, the big thing for, is major issues for next year, anything anybody thinks of that is going to have to be worked in.
The major issue that's always there, garage. What are we going to do, when are we going to do it?
So you'll have, on the November 3rd, you'll have us last two years, and a projected for next year, or last year, this year?
Oh, no, the 3rd will just be a general discussion of ideas, the major items that we think we have to start incorporating into the budget, because the major ones, the actual departments, you know, in my view, given the scope of the economy and people's desire not to have the taxes go up too much, for most of the day-to-day operations, it would remain kind of flat. You have commodities, you have diesel fuel and things like that, that you just have to kind of project out as best you can. But it's the garage, are we going to talk about a garage, then that has, that's going to consume a lot of time, and a lot of planning, and the rest of it is pretty straightforward. We, I don't know of anybody who really needs a new vehicle, which would be the biggest expense. The garage is going to make discussion of the one ton, and perhaps there's many more things wrong with it than I know of, I haven't talked to them in any depth about it. There are things in the garage budget, you know, like the chloride issue that comes up, and see what we can juggle to get more of that available, or to use what we have better. And a lot of things like that to go on, but those aren't the major issues, that's more the day-to-day operations and trying to keep costs in line. And in that, you're talking about, you know, cost of inflation issues, you know, not really much else.
Tim, I got to leave.
Okay. We're nearing the end. All right. Dave, is that it?
Yep, that's, this is for me.
All right, thank you. Other business, ballot language for zoning bylaws, this should have been its own item, but it didn't, it slipped through the cracks. But we want to get the bylaws changes that the Planning Commission has sent to us, agree on the language for that, and the sooner that we agree on that language, the sooner that the clerk and the printers and everybody can have everything lined up for us, so that happens, and we don't, we don't have to worry about flapping around at the last minute to get things on, on the ballot. You have
This is for November?
No.
No, this is for March.
For March, okay.
But there's a hard deadline for that, too, that we just want to make sure that we
Yeah, we just want to get this out of the way, because there are some people who have been looking forward to these zoning changes.
So there's five bylaws, or four bylaws that are going, going to the public?
I believe it is three. Is it nine, or is it four?
No, it's four.
Pull that out, I've got. Yes, it's four. So I circulated to you the ballot language that I suggest, I've worked this through with the Planning Commission, and they agree on this language. This is what will appear on the ballot, which is a summary of the changes that were described in those documents that have been circulated to you. Just to kind of summarize and go through the language, the Shasbury Hollow and Granger Hollow issues, shall the voters approve a change to the zoning district map involving lands along the northern ends of Shasbury Hollow Road and Granger Hollow Road? Change would move the southern boundary of the Forest and Recreation District northward to the 1400 elevation contour in two places. Zoning in the two areas would change from forest and rec to rural residential 200, or our 200 with a minimum lot size of five acres. Recall that this is, the people that live up there have been asking for this, there was a change made some years ago, and it's debatable whether or not it was a mistake or not, but what happened was, the forest and rec boundary followed the 1400 elevation contour, and then it got to these two spots, and then it followed property lines, and then it goes back to the 400-foot, 1400-foot elevation contour. The people in those zones would like it to go back up to the 1400-foot contour, so they can put in septics and that sort of thing that they would like to do on their property there. The Planning Commission is, has approved the change, and we just need the voters to approve the change. What we have to do is agree on what language we put before the voters.
We don't have to have a public hearing for any of these?
Yeah. The first step is for us to say, this is the ballot language that we want. For home occupation, shall the voters approve a change to the zoning bylaws involving home occupations? The changes affirm home occupation as a conditional use, and define limits on the building area that may be associated with home occupations. And you've seen, seen those documents. It was kind of loose as to what, what a home occupation was, and what you could get away with in terms of building with that, and so this better defines what that is. And I think the part about affirming home occupation as a conditional use is kind of a, almost typographical, it was called an accessory use in the document that I was presented by the Planning Commission. I'm told that that change has been done, and is in the, is the way that we do things, but the document hasn't actually been changed, so we're correcting that. Multifamily housing, shall the voters approve a change to the zoning bylaws that allow only one or two family dwellings in rural residential districts, and allow single and multifamily dwellings in village residential districts? As we've heard from the Planning Commission before, right now, we allow multifamily housing in rural areas, but we don't allow it in the village center, and this more or less turns that around the way we think it ought to be. And the fourth one, subdivision regulations, shall the voters approve changes to the zoning bylaws involving subdivision regulations, Appendix C? The changes increase incentives for developers to cluster development while preserving open spaces and correct several minor inconsistencies. The subdivision regulations have moved, been moved into an Appendix C of the zoning bylaws. There are a number of places where they refer to the Planning Commission approving zoning changes instead of the DRB that's being corrected. And then, as we've discussed before, the open space planning that encourages developers to cluster development and keep open space, no
You get bonus lots and so forth if you
Right.
Plan appropriately.
Right. No one has ever taken advantage of that, so looking at how, what kind of incentives other townships offer, we've increased the incentive to developers to do that, which is more consistent with how it's done across the state. So I would make a motion that we approve this language, this ballot language for the March ballot, for zoning bylaw changes.
Shall move.
So there's no more information other than what is right there, so people are going to have to come in to find out what it means?
Correct. Yeah, we can put stuff on the web, but the standard way that people learn about this is through the hearings that we hold. We would serve ourselves well to try to get the word out in any way we can, in the paper, holding more hearings than is perhaps is absolutely required, if we have time to do that between now and then, we have to look at that.
We could do it twice, the next meeting and the meeting after, and just have them on the agenda. These have been thoroughly vetted at the PC meetings, so it would be easy, just put it on the agenda and get the information on the website, and if people need to come in and discuss it, we could do it.
Would they be voted on separately?
Yes.
Each individually.
Any more discussion? Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Stayed? That would be 4-0-0 that time. Do we want to talk about the cross-property idea that you presented to me?
Um, I'd like to talk about an executive session.
Okay.
Can we do that next meeting?
Yeah, let's warn that for the next meeting, it is a real estate transaction, so let's warn that for executive session next time. Generator, I put that there, I was approached by the principal, who said the school board wants to get the generator done. We want to get the generator done, we've done half the generator, more or less, thanks to David, we were able to use the funds that we appropriated last year to buy the parks that we needed for that. We still need $10,000 or $15,000 in labor to get it installed at the school as an emergency generator, so the school can serve as an emergency shelter. I think we should, I'm going to go to the school board on Wednesday, I hope, after what I hope is a short BCA meeting on Wednesday, and discuss with them what their thoughts are, but the principal seemed to indicate that they are ready to step up to the plate financially and meet us somewhere to just get this thing done, and then, we have applied for a grant, or we are going to apply for a grant.
Well, we've applied for it, but I've actually just asked about it, and nobody knows where it is.
Yeah, the hazard mitigation plan, getting that in place is part of making that grant go smoothly, and that's why we're working on that, too, but I think we should be prepared to budget and spend the money to get it done, because it's
Yeah, if we get the grant now, you know, even if we go forward, we'll be, we will use it to reimburse what we spent.
Right.
I mean, that's, that's why I didn't want to let the money go from last year, because if we don't get the grant, we're looking two years down the road, you know, so.
So, you talk about budgeting, I mean, that wouldn't be until July of next year, but it sounds like this is something that should be done this winter?
Let me see what the school board is suggesting.
Okay.
If they're looking at possibly using contingency funds, let's see what we have available and what they have available to get it done. It would be nice if we went into the winter with that in place, in case we had a
Well, currently, it's, yeah.
People looking for shelter.
If it's $10,000, the actual expense loss would be, to split would be nine, because Jerry has a $1,000 commitment from, I apologize to the church group, I forget which one it is, but he's told me that he has a commitment for $1,000, so it'd be $9,000 to split between the two, two organizations, select board and the school board. It is something I probably should get done.
Yeah.
The parts are there.
Okay.
Yeah. So I guess I would just ask
What'd they get, three pages?
The wire we haven't bought, because we've got to be ready to install, because you don't want to buy it in advance, because you've got to cut it up, but all, everything else, we bought last month, so it's just sitting, waiting for the last go-ahead.
I think we can find it.
Yeah, I would just like a nod to indicate that I could say to the school board, yes, if you can come up with $4,500, we'll come up with $4,500 and get this thing done. Good.
You reimburse me with the grant, if it comes through.
Yeah, if, yeah.
All right, we are down to review of action items. Rod Cameron talked to us about the speed problem on Dunham, we're talking to the sheriff, and think about getting, or look, I guess we'll get some signs up on that, right?
Yeah.
Speed signs, if there are not any there.
And curve ahead, those are the signs you can put up to grab people's attention. I think most of these people probably are cutting through, not really expecting, because I know the attorney's talking about, it is kind of dangerous, if you're not, if you're not paying attention.
Yeah. We'll see if we can get, we will get a registered letter to the owner of the house on Dunham, to get
Dunham and Elm, yep.
Agree to, it's what?
It's Dunham and Elm, it's a gray house on the corner, it's all busted up.
To get the unsightlyness dealt with there. We'll put the treasure on the next agenda to talk about our first quarter financial situation, we'll put pamphlets on the website related to what citizens can do for hazard mitigation, and I will update the grant letter for the park grant. I'd written one for the small grant, I can, I only have to make small changes.
Yeah, it's just a few, a few changes.
To bring it up to date, yeah.
We changed the other ones the same way, too.
I believe.
I do have, I do have to get that in the mail Wednesday morning, or FedEx it Wednesday afternoon.
Okay, I should be able to do it tomorrow.
Yeah, because they need 10 copies, of course.
Do you want it on your list, or maybe Dave's got it, DRB, salt shed DRB?
Right. Yeah, I'll set that up for scheduling that, and
Yeah, I mean, I think
That's already on their agenda, isn't it?
Yeah, it was on their agenda, we might have to move it back a little bit to change a few things, but if they approve it, it'll take a day to put up, so it's, you know, but I think maybe what we should consider
Even if they approve it, I think then we've got to come back and decide if we're going to put it up or not.
Yeah.
My vote was only to see if it could be approved, that's all.
To see if it could be approved, yeah.
Okay.
Hope to have it.
Yeah, and in the meantime, maybe when Terry gets back, we'll talk about, maybe we'll just pave underneath the whole thing and not even wait for that, you know, just move what short salt we have. I have to get pavement for, to fix a couple of things, one on Murphy Hill, and, you know, maybe we'll just pave underneath the whole thing, anyway.
Is there salt, no salt in there right now, you haven't got to load yet?
Oh, no, there's some in there, and then that is one of the problems with that thing, it's, it goes down narrow, the bucket loader we bought has a big piston on the top, and it actually hits the roof going in, you know, you know, it really, it's a weird piston, it's straight up, and when you move it, it goes higher, you know, so it hits things, it's, it's what it is.
Motion to adjourn.
Oh, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.